Good morning. Today is Monday, January 7, 2019. I'd like to open this first meeting of the Logan County Board of Commissioners for 2019.
Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good time.
Am I on the right spot? I'm Erin Samwell with DEQ.
I guess.
For the board meeting, is this Mike? Are you Mike Pearson?
I'm Mike.
Mike Pearson?
Yes.
You talked to Helen Valery?
I wasn't sure if you were coming or not.
Yeah. Did you get me on the agenda?
No, I didn't.
Oh, no. Okay.
Well, I didn't know for sure you would come, sorry.
That's all right.
DEQ has a during any citizen's desire to be heard.
Excellent.
As a matter of fact, we were just at that point in the agenda. I'm Marvin Goodman, by the way.
Hi, Erin Samwell.
And so we will, any citizen's desire to be heard, we'll just go to that. And you're from DEQ?
Yes, Department of Environmental Quality.
Right.
And I know you talked to my boss, Katie Cosby.
I did.
Okay.
Can I preface this real quick?
You had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, about the Brownfield Foundation grants.
Brownfield Foundation.
Did you not mention about that?
I think we may have talked about something.
And she's here to basically fill us in.
Right.
On what's available, that way. So it's just an information only.
Correct. And I work at Department of Environmental Quality in Brownfields. And in Brownfields, we get to help cities and counties assess their properties for environmental contamination. So lead-based paint, asbestos, we can do sampling. And then we also have a sister program that is called the statewide cleanup assistance program. And they can do cleanups for you for free. So we can do sampling and then we can get a cost estimate, then we can hand it over to the SCAP program and they can do the abatement for you.
Okay. Good, thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate you bringing that up.
You're welcome.
We have this, we have a six-story building right next door to us here that belongs to the county. It was donated to the county back in the '30s. And it's very, from what we've been told, a very sound structure architecturally, but it does need a lot of work. But the first thing we've been told is it needs asbestos abatement. And before we can do anything, whether we tear it down, whether we remodel it, it doesn't matter, it's got to be abated, what we've been told. And so we're looking for some help forward with that.
We can definitely do that. And it would be best if you knew if you're going to remodel or demolish it beforehand because you would get different cost estimates. Because, for instance, if you're going to remodel it, we would look at lead-based paint and sample for that. If you're going to demolish it, we wouldn't look at lead-based paint, things like that. So it might be best if you can figure out whether you're going to demolish or remodel.
Well, yeah, so we need the same floor space somewhere.
Okay.
Right? So if, I think, if we, not speaking for the board because they're big folks that can do that by themselves. But if we tear it down, we're still going to need the space, so we're going to have to build something back. So some extra amount of dollars per square foot is what it costs to build.
Right.
So is it more cost-effective to remodel it or is it more cost-effective to tear it down and go back up again? I think we need to know what the numbers are on both sides. That's kind of where I was going.
Yeah.
It's a long way around the bush.
Got you.
And I think a lot of that might depend upon how much funding might come from the foundation as to figuring out the county's cost for it.
So we could do all the abatement costs complete. We wouldn't be able to do renovation costs, like you need new carpet or, you know, things like that. But as far as the cleanup, at Brownfields would do the testing and then the statewide cleanup assistance program would do the abatement and it wouldn't cost you all anything.
There's no match funds or anything?
No match.
What's the object of getting this grant?
It's not a grant. It's actually, we have the grant and we just get to pick projects. So you don't have to compete. We have money, we can go ahead and do it. I brought the application. This is what you'd have to fill out.
Sure.
And you turn that in and then we come and hire a contractor to do the work. And then when we get the results back for the testing, then we would hand it over to the program that I was talking about, the SCAP program, and they would do the abatement for you.
And you're sure you're with DEQ?
I brought my business card.
You're Mr. Duke.
Yeah.
Not really, but...
Is there a top end on how much it can be?
What's the max?
No.
No max?
No.
I'm like, Mommy, are you sure you're from the...
Yeah. Thank you. I'm going to have to change that lead-in on social media. We're for the government, we're here to help.
Yeah. Whenever you sign something with the SCAP program, it'll say, if we don't have funds, we can back out of it. But they do have funds, I've talked to them. He said, go ahead and, he has a staff meeting today, or he would have been here, he said, go ahead and tell them we have money to do it.
Wow.
Sweet.
Yeah. Timing is good.
How long is it? What's the timing for, from application point?
Once you turn in the application, we have to go through our purchasing to get the contractor, but we have a, it's called IDIQ indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity kind of program. So we can hire the contractor to get the sampling done pretty quick. So I'd say this spring, we could probably get it done.
Does the building have to be empty for the sampling part?
No, but it would be probably easier if it was. Is there somebody in there now?
Well, the building is six floors and it's being used primarily for storage for all the county offices. So there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah.
And then we have two cellular towers that rent at the top and have some space where they have their equipment for their cell towers.
But there's not people working there?
No.
I think they could sample around all that. Yeah.
Good. Well, I'll see, we'll look at this application, maybe have a special meeting. Yeah, Erin, I appreciate y'all coming out for that. That'll work. It almost sounds too good to be true is what scares me.
You can talk to other cities that have done it if you want to talk to somebody else. Say, are they really telling the truth?
I hate to be that way, but it's just the way it's always been. Other departments, we've had kind of a run.
Yeah, it's weird because most of the things at DEQ are enforcement and penalties and that kind of thing, but we're actually the part that is friendly.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and sharing that with us and we'll put it on our, maybe a special meeting.
Yeah, and if you have questions afterwards that you're like, oh, I wish I would have asked her, just call me or email me.
All right. That'll work. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for fitting me in.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Any other citizens' desire to be heard?
Just real quick, I mean, what she just kind of said, I want to say if you had a company come in, you're spending about 10 grand to have them tell you if it's got asbestos or lead paint, so it's like a really good deal.
That's what scared me.
Yeah. I mean, she's talking about no limit, no, test it for free and all of that, but...
Right.
I know you, it gets to make, you probably spend about $10,000 to have somebody come in if they're willing to do it all for free.
Well, and then they would just stop. Close to 30.
And it may be more, yeah. I mean, it may, I mean, it's going to cost a lot of money just to tell you.
There's no way there's not a string. I'll go through this application.
And if there's a string, you'll find it. I know, the tripwire is, yes. She'll find it. All right. Anything else? All right. Moving on to item four, consideration of possible action on selecting a chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, Logan County, for our next fiscal year. You want it? It's your turn if you want it. If not, then I'm a lot more cognizant than I was, so it just depends if you're good with it. Don't matter to me. I, you know, I think I'm more comfortable with being the vice chair. I think I could do it. You want it in here? I think I could do it, but I'm not certain if I'm going to be making it to a meeting all the time. It would fall to the vice chair, but it would relieve somebody going to the courthouse and issuing checks and doing all that kind of stuff. What do you say, Marvin?
Well, I don't, I don't mind doing it. As a matter of fact, I kind of like, you know, helping where I can help, so wherever, wherever I can best be of service to the boards where I, where I'll serve, whether that's second third chair or first chair in the middle or...
I'd be good with doing it. I mean, I'm good with doing it, I'm just like, not want the lord of it or anything. Whatever you want to do, Mommy. That don't matter to me. All three of you look at me, this is your deal.
My job over here doesn't change.
Well, if you're more comfortable with vice, I mean, I ain't going to make the motion for myself, so I had to make it for Marvin.
That's good.
Is that your motion? Is that a motion, I guess is what I'm asking.
I'm assuming it is.
I'll second it.
As the current acting chairman, we'll make sure that we've got the motion correct because what we're on item four is we're selecting a chairman, not a vice chairman.
All right. Well, Mike, just tell me you'd be more comfortable with vice. I'm not going to make a motion for myself, so I'd make a motion for Marvin.
I'll second. Okay, have a motion and a second for Commissioner Goodman to be the chairman for 2019. Any further discussion on that? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries without exception. Item five, consideration of possible action on selecting a vice chairman for the Board of County Commissioners, Logan County.
I'll move that we make Mike vice chair.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection.
Have the blue chairs or anything.
How about that? All right. I give. All right. Item six, consideration of possible action on conducting annual jail inspection. Are you ready?
I heard that you guys are ready. I'm going to...
We can do that. The board can choose to stop and do it that way or, I don't know what the scheduling is, you can move it to the end and finish the meeting. You never know who's going to be present, so you kind of, where do you want to move that to?
Well, I didn't have a plan because I didn't know who was going to be chairman, so I was going to let them decide. Hey, let's just move to the end of the agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, let's do that. We'll move it. All right, moving on. Item seven, consideration of possible action on approval in minutes of December 31.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, consideration of possible action to approve FY 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant.
This is the EMPG grant that we've gotten the last few years, just the chairman on the back page. It's still $20,000 if I meet certain requirements, and I don't see an issue not meeting those requirements, so...
I'll move we approve.
I'll second your approval. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve detention transportation claim for form November 2018 in the amount of $730.56.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Chairman, we don't have any items for 10 and 11.
Logan County. Item 12, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for Deteriorate Technologies. 12-inch water line on North 229, road five miles west of Highway 74, 20 feet north of the Southwest intersection and the...
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary road crossing permits. All, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 13, consideration of possible action on the consent agenda.
I don't know what came off.
Let's keep off that.
Here, I'll just, let me...
Okay.
Share some. But yeah, no one's went in and canceled those.
No? It's just a bill. At the beginning, there was a walkover, but now it's okay.
Now, on the other though, so on the alert center, we, it was preset in there, a weather warning or weather something. So everyone that went in and did their initial sign-up, signed up to that, but I created a new one for the weather closings, so...
I got the email.
For the closing?
Yep.
But that's, no, you got it because you're subscribed to Newsflash.
Oh, okay.
Because I added this, because to me, there's a difference between saying we're going to close the courthouse down as a weather closure or a weather emergency or tornadoes fixing to drop on your head type thing. So if you want to subscribe to that new one, but because of the difference when I set up the new category, I had put it on the Newsflash too, that's why you got it.
The Newsflash was also opening at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I had done it both ways to try to make sure.
Still under.
They found it counted, but...
No, it was...
I wonder if Mommy knows this was thought into the glass. It might think it's moved on me. It might think it's moved on me. It's the last comment.
Just trying to start some stuff over here.
I'll tell you when we're in there.
Two is...
One way.
Trying to start some stuff in the meeting here.
It's just got a little comfortable with itself. That is it for consent.
I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Item 14, any citizen's desire to be heard.
You might want to hold that till after inspection.
That'd be nice.
Just in case someone had something to say then.
Well, I'll hold it just in case you got something you want to say after the jail inspection.
I have a couple of things to tell the board, so whenever y'all want to hear them, but...
I think we'll wait till after the jail.
You plan on leaving me over there?
Scared, but...
You have a new range. Now, I've made it very specific which cell I want.
It's how your name was, buddy.
All right.
All right. Item six, we will adjourn to the jail to do the inspection over there and then come back over here. All right, we're back again. Item 14, any citizen's desire to be heard.
I was glad you saved that.
Well, I'm looking at item six on the jail inspection. I don't guess we took frontal action, so...
Well, I did get some comments that we're here nice and clean. I think Sheriff's done a good job keeping it up. Looks good in here.
I agree.
So if you want to put that in the form of a motion, that's fine. But don't call it for a motion.
No deficiencies noted, is I think how we typically do that.
No serious deficiencies noted. That's why, that's why auditors would write that, no serious deficiencies noted.
You got to leave the door open a little bit.
Have to find something.
I've got a question. When those inmates were about to be released, is there available to them any of the services that the county has for homeless and whatnot like that? Do they have to seek that out or is it presented to them as whatever kind of possible help they might get on the outside?
Sadly, in this county, we don't have a whole lot of resources for housing and stuff like that. We have been known to take them to the Jesus House in Oklahoma City. Most of the time when they get out, they've got a family member that they notified to come pick them up. In those cases that they don't, we don't have anything locally that we can really refer them to. Some of the Minister Alliance sometimes will help them, but we just really don't have a whole lot of resources.
We got neighborhood solutions and we have COCA here and the Taliesin Department here.
Yeah, but most of those times when they get released, they've got these fines. You know, it's an interesting dynamic, depending on how long they've been in jail, depends on if they've got anything to go back to. So they get, they get released, there was several thousand dollars in fines and they've got to go find a job. And do they find housing? Do they pay the fines? Do they put food on the table? It creates kind of a repetitive cycle, if you will, for a lot of these guys that are trying to get back out and be successful because they do have somebody required set forth by the court financially that they're kind of height of losing battle sometimes. And I don't know if many of these places require deposits, some things like that. And when they get out of here, a lot of times, they don't have a dollar in their pocket.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a, it's a tough situation for them.
Oh, we understand. All right. Good enough for me. What are you going to do?
Yeah. Bad deal. I'll bring it up. Okay, so any other comments, announcements from item six from the jail inspection? All right. I think we've completed item six. I don't think there's a lot of action here, I'm just saying we've done it. All right, so we'll move on to action 14, any citizen's desire to be heard. Yes, ma'am.
DEQ had made contact with Stormwater Waste Water and folks wanting to be on the agenda for the 15th.
See, I thought that's what this was this morning.
Well, that's what was throwing me when she said DEQ because I thought, okay, we're fixing to, but I received a phone call from the assistant director...
Everybody's coming back.
Asking to be removed from the agenda. And what he said is that they had actually watched the video from the meetings that involved the wastewater and they were very understanding of the concerns that this board expressed that we did not have the funding and the means to do what they were asking us to do. So they are working on putting together a plan and an offer to try to make this a feasible thing. They would like to have a one-on meeting at some point and then before they come to the board with what they're trying to work with us. But at this point, this group that now is looking at it is appearing to want to actually work with us. And in fact, he went as far as telling me that he promises he will not threaten us with a $10,000 a day fine. That they really understand the position that the county's in and are going to try to find some way around that that will make the federal level of DEQ happy. So I'll let you all know when I hear back from them.
Okay. And will we have a money representative at that meeting? Yeah, I'd like to do it.
I will let Mommy know when I hear back from them. They are hoping it'll be next week that they can have something that they'll call and say, okay, can we schedule a little sit-down, so...
So there's maybe one or two catchers over there, in front of the gobs?
I was extremely surprised and very at that phone call and that this is a group that seems to understand and the fact that they had went back and watched the video so they had seen the situation and were willing to work to try to resolve it, I think was a good thing. We'll see, but they will not be here on the 15th.
All righty then. I think that's good news. Bob Pruitt, I think, had an influence in all this and according from doing what he's doing with EPA, I think has had a big influence on DEQ and just their demeanor.
Well, and I can't help but wonder if the last time they were here and it was a contentious meeting with them over this, also here at that time was one of our state legislators who was not impressed at the direction that that meeting took. So I don't know if perhaps when he came in and said, you know, I'll look into it, if possibly he's had a hand in this as well, so...
I don't know, I think so.
Well, I think there's a lot of state agencies or the bureaucrats, people that are there day-to-day that aren't elected by anybody, but they draw off a paycheck from the taxpayers. They get their heads swelled up and it's not until somebody puts them back in their cage, you know, explains to them that they're here to service, not to, not to direct.
The one thing that the gentleman that called me last week did point out is he wanted us to be aware that, you know, they're kind of caught in the middle because they are charged with enforcing what the feds are requiring to be done, you know. This was not an open... You know, they, this was not an Oklahoma, per se, requirement. This is a federal requirement.
The feds are shut down, so...
Well, and they get a lot of funding from the feds, so they're beholden, so...
So I will keep you all in the loop as I get more information on that.
All right. Anything else from any citizen desiring to be heard?
I'll stop the list there. I gotta have something, you know, for the next meeting.
Okay. Item 15, comments, announcements, questions about the Board of County Commissioners. Mike?
Oh, I don't know. Might need that lay down, play down machine sometime or another. We'd get some nice weather.
Is that still accessible in your yard, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're waiting for weather and, and see what the contract's gonna look like for late in place.
Yes.
I'm also anxious.
We're waiting.
Keep a lot of people busy.
Anything else, Mike?
I'm good, man.
I do. Hey, Mike, County Route 76 and post?
Yes, sir.
It needs a covert. If I furnish a covert, will y'all put it in?
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree, it does. We put one in there. I'm kind of wondering if it got clogged or whether it got bent, but we put one in there a few years back.
Well, I called in to locate on it, and I got a covert. If y'all's willing to put it in, I'll haul it out there.
I mean, sure of that.
All right.
Well, that's all I got. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, we got somewhere else we gotta haul out there on that. 76. But yeah.
That's all I got.
Okay. I have nothing else, so I will entertain a motion for item 16.
I'll move in a second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.